Any questions?
Oh God, I want to say, like, you thank you for this for the last year. Then we never have things for, well, now she'll think about you. But the effective means you can just imagine, you never saw them. And your office will be a whole call, right? Like, let's speak as they're already about to do. You know, spread a breath on all of you, right? So that's what we pull me to, so I press my left hand again.
Thank you, Ben. All right, giving flagellations. A flagellate is to the flag of the United States of America. The two republics which stands one nation under God indivisible for liberty and justice for all. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
There are no adjustments.
All right. There's no adjustments. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So.
With motion in the second and session. I'll basically say, all right, proposed by design. Motion carries. All right, next item is budget management.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Any more questions? Want to go to the side?
Here it goes.
There it is.
So there we go. There we go. Turn around. And there.
That is bad. Oh, oh. First, the issue is, I don't. There again, all of you, there is. Other than that. What are the reasons? Another, eh, what even you are without. And I saw it. More than. I don't know. Well, I don't have a way to answer you. But.
Okay. Luke?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I would. Okay. Awesome. I want to thank everybody for coming out. This is the first of several work sessions that we'll have to follow the fiscal year, uh, 2024 budget process for the annual lottery and budget. Uh, I understand we're all coming in to different places. Some would be there or many of these, but for some of you, this is your very first budget process. So I'm, I'd like to go with this, be able to kind of go, go slowly through this. Make sure there's appropriate strain. So everyone's going to go to the same thing or where we want. We're going to try and break these work sessions down to that before we go to a different topic, we've got each consent and based on that, we can have a few areas available. So just a very general overview. What are we doing in this budget process? Town budgets adopted required by multiple lines of different statutes. What does that mean? It's every, every year we as a town are required by general statutes. We have a comprehensive operating budget that requires these balances across all of our funds. Um, over in revenues and expenditures. So in doing so, we have four major funds. Uh, the general fund, powel fund, powel being the fund that we use to make sure it's uh, water and sewer fund and the licensing. So those are also listed in orders. So we look at your budget materials that spans 10, 20, 30 and 40 respectively. Uh, budget process, uh, historically has been about a six month process and that applies to this budget, uh, going forward, starting with the 25 budget. Uh, it will be really a twelve month process. So you had a budget manager that will place that will help us work on that all year round. But with this budget, uh, the budget team, um, excuse me, uh, budget process began early December. Uh, that involved the department directors submitting their estimated budgets to myself. And by statute, I am the budget officer. So what did that mean? As we got the budget request from the department heads, uh, budget team, uh, which involved the respective department head and what was being discussed, myself. And the budget manager sat down and reviewed, uh, the estimates for both the operating budgets and capital. So what does that mean? Operating would be non-personal, they want. Capital will be items in their budget request that exceed over five thousand dollars. And have a useful life of over a year. So the budget team has researched and compiled historic revenue data for FY 2024. And come up with a few revenue projections. Uh, town staffs reviewed those findings, uh, through here and timeline outlined. And given priority guidance based on the strategic plan. And that's all we want to work towards. Uh, we're kind of going to review the project plan in the middle of the year. And we're slowly working towards the process where we're going along that between what lay down in our strategic plan and how we're laying out our budget. So that's going to be a process for the next 12 months. We need to slowly integrate. Final budget will be presented and made. So part of the budget process, if you know the form of the department that we have these budget work set. Uh, what is required is a budget balances and we have more of a public hearing for the budget to be formed. So these sessions help us get those details to what that final budget product will be. So these are the five strategic priorities laid out in your strategic plan. And this is a reference, the strategic plan document has been provided to you after table. So it had the same content as well approved previously, but it's been cleaned up, uh, viewed by our friends at McGill. So we can use this as a, a publicized document that we share with outside parties. And you'll see throughout this, this presentation that we've tried to license and things we've had tonight with some of those five overall strategic priorities. So here's our timeline. This is an overview of what we're trying to accomplish with each of these work sessions. So March the 27th, that's cannot. And this is, these are the three main topics we're going to try and cover, uh, most in very generally, the general fund for our 10 fund. And also the capital expenses outlook and employee pay and benefits. Uh, this is our first kickoff meeting, so we tried to, uh, get everybody acclimated to what we're going to be covering before we jump deep into operations. So our next meeting will be April the 13th. Uh, we will have our representatives from Bruce and Nichols here. They will have little details on what we're looking at as far as outlook on water and sewer projections for revenue. And also protocols that we're working on for the creation of a stormwater program. And also the capital projects we have related to utilities. I know we've got a lot of different capital brackets in the pipeline. Uh, this will give us an opportunity to kind of cover, uh, forecast and what we're looking at there. Then on April the 24th, we'll get into the details of the operating budget of the departments. So that gives us some more time to go through that and make some of the necessary, uh, addendums to that and also write pieces. Uh, where each of the departments will make their recommendations for any adjustments fees during the next fiscal year. And then depending on where we are, uh, May 9th, we may have an additional workshop. So anything that we don't iron on in these first three work sessions, we can kick to a later meeting or we can table that to that name. That we have an extra night to cover any, uh, topics that we need more data than to discuss. Uh, we'll present the budget on May the 15th. And then we'll have a public, public hearing required by statute June the 20th. And after the public hearing, we will approve the budget. If any questions, you're in my, that's where.
No, but if we, if we've got the, um, if we present the budget, we, you know, do we need to wait until the 20th to be? Because if we have a public hearing before that, then, um, we can, we're going to sixth, we did the public, we did the public hearing on the sixth and we vote on the 20th.
So there's a standard requirement that we leave a certain period of time between the presentation right there. You can have, you can have a public hearing and then close the hearing, they usually approve it. But there has to be an opportunity for the public to review.
Right, that's what I was saying is if we, we have the 15th and we have the, we do the 15th and we have a public hearing on the sixth, then we vote on the 20th. But what we're saying is we can have a public hearing and approve them. I guess the optics that, you know, we, we've, you know, obviously been looking at in terms of the public input, the public input is going to be um, given, then we need time to absorb that public input and then, and then make a, make a decision.
Right, you, at what? Once the budget presented on May the 15th, you can make any changes to it you want. You could throw the whole thing out and adopt the code with an argument.
I mean, that's not, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, is, you know, if, if we're, if we're claiming to follow our, um, precedent, then, you know, in terms of the public hearing, then we probably should leave some time and not vote on it right away.
No, as I say, if we could move the public here, no, then we have some time to absorb comments from the public before we approve the budget. Instead of doing it the same day.
Yeah, and, and this is what we've done for the nine years I've been here.
Yeah.
So if you guys want to mix that up, we just need to make sure that, that when we do the public hearing, that it's, it's going to push back the time that we have to, to get it to you guys sooner. So I think it might be a little tight. Um, but I mean, we can, um, plan to do that in next year's program.
Well, I guess my, my, my question though is, so what you're saying is we have to have, um, there, you know, so how far in advance can we have to receive the budget from the time of public hearings?
Um, we have to notice it for at least two weeks. So, um, and within ten days of the bubble budget public hearing. So I would have to look at the exact dates of, um, of the public hearing, um, the advertisement for the newspaper, um, to see which dates those would be. But, but I mean, we can work on that and get back.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, it's the 15th and you have to notice it for two weeks. And we won't, we already know that we're going to get the, the budget on the 15th. Then if you do the, the notice on the 15th, then that's the 29th. And then we still got, we've got, we've got eight days.
What if we had a special call on public hearing or 12?
And I don't really care. I mean, I just, I just, you know, if we're, if we're going to continue our, you know, our, um, precedent that we've set, that we need to have time in between a public hearing and the vote. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we can, we will definitely look at those dates and get back to you.
Can you look at the 12, is there a special call meeting for the hearing? That's, that might not approach your title on incident.
And I have to look at statute, but I'm, I'm wanting, what I'm remembering is that the public hearing has to be on a regular meeting. But, but I'll, I'll look at that and we'll get back to you.
Okay, yeah.
Any other questions about the timeline? So this is a slide I figured we'll spend some time on and talk through. Tried to highlight what we were having in the general fund and some broad things that we can all kind of understand it, um, together. So at the top, you've got property tax estimates. FY 23 approved budget, that's the budget we're in currently. That goes back to July 1st, 12th to, uh, present day for June 30th. Uh, year end projections, that would be what we're estimating to collect the taxes by June the 30th of this year. And then FY 24 is what we're thinking, we're projecting to see at the end of the year, or excuse me, for next year.
What does that say?
Which one?
FY 24, I can't see.
Sure, it says 3,959,900.
If you look, if you look in the slides, it said the next, the next one is that a little difference, but it's, we're trying to do that.
No, it's so small.
Yeah.
That's worrying, I can't do that.
But I guess my, my question is, okay, so what's, what's driving the, the estimate that we're going to receive $38,000 less?
That's a great question. But I, I bet you ask. So we are currently between reevaluation. So we asked the same question in the county and the answer that we got back is that is a reflection of people protesting the assessments that they had, which called tax revenue draw. So people receiving their evaluation from previous one, protested one of their appeals and pay for a reduced on the fact, so that was the variable. Um, we will go through reevaluation for the following budget year for FY 25. So I would expect that you're going to see a pretty big uplift.
Yep, that may with my husband.
And, and probably that's, but that's not, it's coming with that period, that's for the following year. Um, which is why I think we're going to be expecting in the next work session, water rates and, and stormwater, because that's.
I think, I guess, my, so, I mean, I guess that we're, we're going to collect roughly $2,000 less than, than what we approved budget. But you're saying that 38,000 is being, that 38,000 is being driven by the, the people that won their appeals. So that's, that's what we anticipate the tax thing.
That's right.
Okay.
We're, 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 and more, so we're preventing this and adding a new development. And then you got the, the same amount of profit you had before, people's tax of going appeal to reduce that overall, um, never turn.
Yeah.
So you're looking at close to a $40,000 reduction, knowing that at FY 25, it could swing fast. Any, any questions about quality taxes?
No.
Our tax rate is currently 54 cents per hundred. Uh, sales tax, so this is optimistic. This is, this is the, what's some of the positive signs on the budget. We currently have in our approved budget, 3,611,312 dollars in the current budget that was approved. We believe we're going to receive more than that by the end of the year. Uh, 3,875,400 is what we're estimating. Uh, sales tax will be a little tricky to estimate because it always lacks a quarter behind. They're all receiving money from the three months previously and it's all based on sales during that month. So it's not consistent in all the month. So it's not as precise of a projection as probably taxing what you're very formulated. Uh, but you can, we can come pretty close. Um, I think we, we're, we're working with the county to make sure we have as precise of accounts as possible. But we do feel confident in the numbers that we're projecting for FY 2024, which is 4,034,300. Uh, that's a pretty significant upgrade in sales tax and where we'll begin previously, uh, 11.71% increases in sales tax.
Why do we think that? Why we think that we're there big time on?
That figure is a combination of increased inflation, the prices have gone up, which results in increased results in sales. Uh, also, uh, you can look at previous years and see the trend analysis where that had gone. And this was a conservative, uh, so when we were looking at it, we were looking at anywhere between um, 400 on the conservative side up to 500,000, be more aggressive. So this is really on the lower here of what we estimated, uh, and feel pretty solid that there.
Is there any factor in, in, uh, slowing? If there is one slowing down in the economy, because you start, you start to see a little bit of that. The home sales are already starting to, not tremendous, they're starting to ratchet down some, getting back to normal, do everything like that. Also to see, y'all sort of seeing, uh, you're doing, we're gonna read that sales as well.
So that's where I think there's a good distinction between property taxes and sales tax. Property tax is only limited to the corporate boundaries of solid city and the sense value of those properties in solid city. Sales tax is not based on the corporate boundaries of solid city, it's based on the entirety of Chatham County. So even, I feel like the projection that we have is on the conservative side. And even factoring in a potential slowdown of the economy, Chatham County as a whole is doing so well economically that I don't see an economic turndown disrupting that projection. Uh, we saw that really with late counter back in the early, but we're paying to keep on the wall, uh, as if nothing stopped during the, the worst of the recession. I think a lot of, of North Chatham, East Chatham is going to continue to see pre-recorded growth. Uh, even despite a recession form where it is that will not affect those numbers. Uh, another benefit that every municipality and city in the last couple of years is pretty significant uptake due to tax and online sales. So anything that's sold for anybody in Chatham County online, they're paying sales tax on that. That's ultimately just going to be back here. So even in local shops, you may as a problem, you're pushing order in while even the elements on Walmart.com. From the set, so I, I think you, you can gain more confidence in sales tax numbers today and in a few years and for your local economy, we do a lot of it. But I, I think it's very possible that number could be, you know, 4.1 million. But we always want to make sure we're, I, I'd rather come in estimating on the low end of revenues and bring in more money than have to tell you we've got a backlog. So when, when it comes to sales tax, it's, it's, it's a misnomer that, you know, that you could buy something in the Apex side of Chatham County or Pittsburgh that doesn't benefit return. Your point of sale anywhere in Chatham County has to come back to you a bit of the, the solid city from a sales tax perspective. So all the money that's distributed on sales tax throughout Chatham, solid city makes up roughly 10% of the whole of Chatham County's population. So roughly 10% of all the sales tax revenue comes back solidly, or the bottom layer of Chatham, that data is take place. Uh, other revenue estimates, um, we've got that, um, a little bit in flux. This one, again, we feel pretty comfortable with. I will say this is very likely on the low. Uh, and the reason being is this isn't really taking into consideration potential of significant fees and permitting for Wolf Street. So we just, this is, we just assumed on regular years, what revenues we believe. Um, because we don't know the timeline of when some of these things will be paid. So we did bump that up a little bit, um, due to, uh, some things we got going on, but nothing, nothing that's significant. So there's an overall picture of, of where we, we stand with that. So it's, uh, unfortunate to see property taxes dip like they have at 5%. That is, that is a noticeable amount of revenue, um, but it's certainly offset by increases in the sales tax of 11.71% increase. Any questions? Okay. Capital expenses, and this is where we wanted to try and tie into what we're looking at, uh, with our strategic plan. So one of the things that we've identified as one of our priorities was trying to make sure that we're implementing capital improvements in a fiscal responsible effort. So as a town budget team, we tried to look at where we standing that comes to our current fleet management program. And one of the challenges that we brought into is that our vehicle inventory is very anxious. We've got some departments that have done a great job. We've got some departments that their vehicles are completely falling apart. We've got, and we don't really have any system of analysis of how we're deciding when to replace a vehicle. Is this vehicle a lemon where although it still bums, we're putting more into it than it's worth? When is the appropriate time to sell it? Or maybe we move it to another department and buy something else, there's not really a problem. But we're trying to create that now across all of our zones. So from an inventory standpoint, uh, the last quarter finance staff is performing a detailed inventory log. Making sure that we understand their, um, their maintenance history, uh, what year they're, they're from, what they are, the mileage, all those sorts of things. And starting in July 1st, we'd like to move forward developing a fleet management program, which will project town needs every time equals where it is. Uh, the fleet management program will ultimately, uh, drive purchasing and we'd like to centralize that through finance department. That does not mean we're cutting departments out of having equal of what we buy. What that means is centralizing that from a person. Um, because we can make sure we take advantage of the best yield that we're going to stay contracts for the things that we do. We're taking advantage of warranties and things that are out there and we have the appropriate paperwork there. And also making that standardized through everything. Um, and I'm sure all of you at the one corner or another, been on the book works and garage and seen what that looks like. We don't have, you know, states there on the country and we have one team. And one of the challenges that we have run into is one team can possibly do all the old families and correct the placement of brake lines and pads and all that, all the different types of motors and vehicles that we have. Especially with the variety of equipment and, uh, vehicles that we have. So one of the things we'd like to do is do our best to standardize that. And our recommendation is that we buy a combination of Ford F-13 trucks and Ford Explorers.
Does that include the police department?
Yes.
And so are, are the explorers more, uh, cost efficient, cost efficient and effective than the chargers?
Yes, okay. And that, and that's exactly why. Um, and there, and there's some of these, one, you're going to be a better class mistake, not bad. That's not, that's not buying something to meet your four, you're having your nod, and then it's just you get a better price support. Uh, if we standardize that way, then it's, those are vehicles that can be sanitized and used upon multiple departments. Uh, one of the things that I commend this board for doing is doing a good job at the constant having a solid clear of places for the police department. The police department at my heart has the best fleet we can. Uh, where I think it would be beneficial is to continue that and make sure that we're using the police department as a primary source of leading vehicles in the department. But there are vehicles that can be moved out of the police department and reassigned to other departments instead of buying new vehicles for this department. So for, anyway, we have, we have a need for a lot of these things in the camp, the health department, the police department, uh, a town hall board, and they need to go to that, uh, check the mail. Um, do a, um, fine inspection, part of planning part. They basically 10 miles on a vehicle a day. But they need a real vehicle that's reliable and dependable, that doesn't constantly make it to the shop. And that's where we, we're getting, we have a lot of this, um, band-aiding the vehicles, called the man for the use. A lot of these vehicles could be moved and given a second life of another department outside of D D. And it allows us not to buy a brand vehicle for a department where it's appreciated back than the revenue they're giving.
So you just have to take the police package out of the vehicle?
That's the only thing.
That was just a bad.
It's difficult to be pursued.
We give you the bank.
Right. Well, you take it on the table. The, the benefit of that is also if you, if you buy F-13s and explorers and you could use it to all those for, for the police department. The benefit of that is you also could potentially reuse some of the light bars and the cages and stuff, a couple of format and the same type of vehicle. Uh, set up helping buy a brand versus to that, but she's been up 10,000 miles for vehicles, buy all outfit into that to go and outfitting to this part.
The forward and backwards of that, changing their interior, you, you still have to get, uh, new changes. But interior.
Yeah, it's, sometimes they'll go two or three years where you don't, they don't make any changes. And sometimes they'll change them every year. That's, that's not the same, the things like the light bar and stuff, we may be, we may be on the surface of these. But there's just.
The, somehow light don't belong with interiors. When I was doing this, it had been changed every year. There's always something that may be a canvas, boring, so that you can change the cab, cables. Now, you said Ford Explorers and therefore there's not.
Well, the challenge of the dog is that the rankers are being discredited. So that's not going to be an option for a board.
When, when they call it, they just continue next year.
You said Ford was changing. It is.
The charging is too small.
Well, and the way, you can't look at what you pay if you go to the Ford dealership or Chevy dealership or Dodge dealership yourself. Say a contract files is ready for the, um, you may get a substantial discount on one being called a contract. Say a contract files is ready for the, um, you may get a substantial discount on one vehicle, say a contract. Or you may make one sticker that is a good theory. Uh, for example, if you're looking at Ford trucks. You know, you can get a Maverick, if you get a Range Rover, you have an F-150, you can get a Super Duty, there's a range. But you'd be surprised at the difference in price of Range Rover and a Maverick and F-150. Where maybe it's significant to buy for yourself at home. Uh, it may only be a few thousand dollars to get the difference of over eighty-five on fifty off the day contract. So it's too, they need to do that. Uh, now if you're talking about buying a Super Duty trucks. They have the diesel engines and all that, that can haul sixteen thousand pounds. Yeah, should have paid a lot of the Ford, which we don't have the duty. And it's the same thing with the Explorers. Uh, I think you can save probably at least ten thousand dollars a week without owning a truck. And it's still, it's still going to be an expensive process. If you're talking about three people, uh, I think you're looking at forty, forty-one, forty-two thousand. Bank to buy what your truck or the Explorer is not about thousand dollars every time. You buy a police package at really early. Um, I've said, you can take your light bar down and fall and put it on another one. You're like, it's still gonna be, if it's for patrol, it's still gonna give you pursuit rating. But that just means it can increase potentially the sale value they're going to for a police department from small to available five. The, one of the benefits of going this route is what we've done this year. We've had so many Crown Vics. That were sitting on the lot that were really not being used but sold. We've used that revenue from that surplus process. To buy one. But that's even a little bit less as well. Uh, with VC Group, we've been using hardware as a service. Which means we've basically been paying a four-year contract, a replacement cycle with a schedule of replacing computers and equipment. Um, the downs, the benefit of that is a contract. That's easy to manage. The downside of that is you're paying a premium for it. So by having surplus vehicle available that we can sell. That revenue we're bringing in by IT equipment before we reach that point. So we're not, we're getting better equipment and it has a longer lifespan. And we have dedicated revenue for this, for vehicles that are used around the line. And if we stay on top of this. Then we'll always have, um, that extra revenue to, to cover that excess.
Another question. Uh, these X S B, uh, I mean, there's a call, we have an agency through license, insurance, all that kind of stuff. How many H S B do we currently have? Failing them well. And after we did that, that now, I, I agree, but that seems to run all over everywhere. And the second question is, uh, you're going to go with one fifty. Bro, and there are certain places where you're going to need two fifty. Like, 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 that thing that they pull around and twigs out of, so. Yeah, and they've got some prayer for the guy at all. So, I mean, one fifty, yeah, you can do it. They say do it. So, is, how's that thing?
It, it would, because what, what, that, that's a, that's a separate issue on that road. Uh, because when I'm mentioning this, this is standardization of trying to divide vehicles for transportation. So what you're talking about is it's a specialty job for someone to do something where they got hogged significantly not a million. Uh, I would, I would recommend you kind of treat that like, uh, a piece of equipment, like my attention. Looking at it in that perspective because. F-150s and Explorers, we have employees that take vehicles like that off. What I like to get away from is people driving two fifties and buying fifties home unless freighter transportation vehicles because they're not good efficient. And work towards that. So the, the Super Duty, the heavy duty truck to refer to, those who want to build this on a lot. And they use to do a specific job that they were designed to do, rather than just riding around in a bus, sending them to. By the transportation.
Yeah, because I remember some of the. Years. There's some of the, I think, I'm thinking, you call baseball, they wanted to eat, but they're wanting them all. They had to load up some motor or something and then take it somewhere or something like that. But yeah, it's, it's probably that I would say used in that capacity less attention. Uh, well, what I know about it is to rebuild my last one.
Well, and if you treat those trucks like a piece of equipment, it's not. Equipment, you don't trip them in a vehicle and say, well, that's ten years old or it's got a hundred thousand miles. It's time to replace it. These equipment can keep really doing this work out because you're not going to sell it and get much more. You can, you feel more comfortable kind of running it into the ground. But if you got a nineteen ninety five, I went to fifty, it's running great. I wouldn't, I would worry about it. Right, who, but, you know, it's because it's not a running lot. And it's a little bit more expensive. So you're looking at high, you know, high sixties, uh, sixty thousand, close to seventy thousand buying at two fifty, for example.
That's a stripped down.
And that's a stripped downward. Well, that's a state contract.
Yeah, they're still stripped down.
So you're, you're getting at least twenty percent off down on the vehicle, but the truck, it's a stripped down version. Uh, where buying a one fifty, you can get in low forties. So you want to minimize it when you move to two fifty, but you want to minimize those not buying more than you have. Because you're basically paying a fifty percent premium just to have that extra money and all of that. So the, the benefit of this, although it meets the definition of capital. Uh, because it's, it's going to serve you a long life and it's going to cost more than five thousand. I, I'd like us to start thinking about vehicles like something operational. But it's just a plug. We throw a certain number of vehicles in the budget every year and, and almost forget about it. It's just something that works on rotation. Uh, but we look at the larger capital line, not the two fifties or the tractor as larger long-term equipment purchases. But you try to stagger it throughout several fiscal years.
How long do you think it would take to get to the fault where our fleet is up snub enough where we treat it as an operational expense?
I, I think it will benefit you immediately because the police department is already in the chair. Um, I think you can just, I would recommend four, buy four, uh, vehicles for the police department. Every year and make that part of an annual cycle.
So you think we could get to have it as an operational capital expenditure from twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five? That's what I'm saying. My question was, you know, we have to get the standardization part done, get the fleet up. But then after that, how long do you think it'll take for we can treat this operational? And then for capital expenditures, if you look at things that you've talked about, the years, the buildings and whatnot.
That really, that's a hard question to answer because that really depends on how we find other things. If, I, I, I think you need to take two hundred thousand dollars and just set it aside and send it to the vehicle's handling. And this, and it's, I basically forget about it. This is like a vehicle, create like a vehicle phone. Um, and just lock that off. It separates that from other down. If you do that, then I can, we can pull four vehicles out that are ready to be moved out from, from potentially BD. And assign them all to departments and essentially it will. I think you get a return of this within a couple of years of that. The real benefit is that once you take a lot of these lesser vehicles off the lot for the town. Um, you're going to reach a point where you're going to start adding more. This allows people to say, okay, we have a vehicle that will pass them down and we can extend a lot of that vehicle. Where otherwise, if we don't, we're, we're going to be pulled not buying dump vehicles. And we're going to have to find a sequence just to have it go beautiful. And what we really get away from is the, the lane deferred the vehicle purposely. And then we need ten vehicles at one time. We've got to go find that's half a million dollars. And the challenge has been in that place before. If you buy manually, you're going to save money.
So should we start, we start a capital group? That's what he's saying. He said, it just, it can, two hundred thousand dollars on each budget. Those would be, I mean, every year. When you start, when you start that? Is it in this year's budget? Are you talking about starting next year?
I would start it in, well, in budget work.
So you guys can hear more of that money for that?
Yes. That's something that y'all comfortable with. It, it's almost like you're simplifying this. If you, if you set the money aside, that's a lot easier to borrow the money, you can turn it down the road. And then you're paying five to ten thousand dollars a year in interest. All this, you know, you can keep up all the vehicles, but it's so far that, whether the, uh, sale. This, and, and that's something to consider. That's different from the last two or three years. We've seen a pretty substantial increase in interest rates. Uh, we can't hit financing for two percent. We are dying a couple of years today. Even, even for government, they're going to get five, six percent. Yeah, I mean, we, we might get a little discount being government that's secure, but. Uh, yeah, I don't want to think they'll get better than six. But you don't pay them for vehicles. So if we can sell on that, you're repetitive to saving some of the sales patents. You put it towards vehicles. You put it in the schedule of the vehicles that are in here. And it's become part of your operation. It's a really easy discussion by a few years for the budget. Because then there are only options. What do you gain from this?
If I remember correctly, we've had this discussion several, uh, uh, but, uh, the tree. So whatever you want to call it, the pole and the A, we want to do the, the bottom line is we got down to the end process. So how much money we had to spend and how much money we spent. Some have years somewhere lost time to give, cut down the number of vehicles, all kinds of stuff. So it's, it's the first time we've heard this, uh.
On the evil requests to take you. Now, I forgot to figure out there's a server time, but the deal can be ordered to a table sheet. And you can wait, they're canceling.
Yeah, and the windows is matured, that's the code. It normally was early, you know, fall on their contract ended with open, you got vehicles that didn't spread. It's, it's all over the place, you know. You're just constantly looking, seeing when they're going to open it up. Instead of being open for two months, it may be open a couple of weeks. Um, because they're so many ordering that they think so many. So it's a, it's a. It's a different environment right now, but that, that would say that. I, I do think, I, I'm sure this is something that's been started before, but I do think there's a couple of neat differences in why it's critical to know. One, we're talking about is the interest rate in mind. I don't think, anything's going to change the venture rates in the future. If anything, they're going to be worse. Because the economy has slowed down a little bit, but it hasn't dropped the name of materials and supply for a couple of field charges and things. Uh, the other is when Wolf Street coming and other areas coming. I don't think it's a question of whether the town can grow, which when it's going to grow and how fast and what are you going to need to add that that's on good. So if we don't start this now, it's going to get away from us because we're going to be having questions of, okay, we're having a position. But it's not just a position. Now we got to have a vehicle for that same time. So fifty thousand dollars always now under thousand dollars because you're doing both of those at the same time. This is a chance for a couple of years to get ahead of it. Um, I don't think we have any more time than that. Um, if we've got a couple of years to try to describe it, it's going to be a little bit of us. Um, I think in fact, we've done a good job. EB buys and what have we done there? But we're moving the truck to town hall, moving the truck to COVID point, or we're parking it. Can be critical extending the life of some of those items there. Um, but when we have positions, we're going to have to add vehicles to it. It's going to be a lot easier to say. We need to offer a vehicle purchase of four, five or six, you know, in a few years. And now we're going to start buying six vehicles at one, on the, it's just going. I think we're at the point where you know the purpose of it happening to me, which is what the best way to pay for it. I think any other option that this is going to cost is more than the other. Any other concerns or questions? I mean, there's a question there about the, the two fifties. We do have three, two fifty right now. We, it's something we do have, that's scattered around.
Uh, I see right around here in the box.
Yeah, well, we're trying to, if we can get some other one fifties out or pull that back, it's. Yeah, there's a big difference between the gas model and the one fifty versus the two fifty. And I think we can operate that with more pressure.
While you're on, you think you may be covered somewhere else. Why in long vehicles, so there are just some rods over there, different things. The rod is dull, dark, crowded, doesn't say for anything. We've got vehicles you can't even completely get in, in the building to work on. You got some mechanics playing outside in the rain, the cold, everything else. And with that said, you know, uh, doing pretty, you're doing a good job, working out the work with. But, uh, you know, probably something to all look into, uh. Doing, is there anything being looked at for that?
So now I and Chris and I have had several discussions about that. Potential expansion of growing options. I don't think with the potential growth that we're looking at, that buying more property around the current site is going to address all those needs. I wouldn't get rid of that site, but I might try to buy another site and use that as basically a limit for the slate. It's also where your fuel pump is out. So I think there's a lot of benefit to retaining it, but I think you're going to need to develop a proper garage. Whether that's buying an existing garage and red carpeting it or relocating to another location in the near future. I, I, I think acquiring the Carter Bank property like we can for such a good deal. Makes that conversation about home workout, you know, potential fires, which you don't really mind you doing because. We've mitigated the facility needs significantly from improving this building. Um, and, uh, buying, uh, so, so we know from our office space. But if we make the renovation that favor, we're going to be breaking office life for growth. So we can focus on saying a garage and potential fire station, you know, really the last facility we have.
Shame we didn't, you know, look, look into the, the old Chevy dealership when, when it's up. That would have been, I think, a, a really good opportunity.
Now, I hear Chris correct, he's mentioned that so. So they want to do that, but they're not. Um, you know, I, I, I would also consider it a good, certainly something we need to do with fire protection. Uh, maybe leading to the Wolf Street and Grove and the mother works. You know, that might only be something you want to, really enough with one another, not burning the simply may on one entrance. If they'll, I, I'm a very, so that we can be very, uh, buy facilities on a site and say, when.
They need to make themselves a trust.
Wrong with the shitty road.
They wanted way too much. There's lots to the.
Yeah, just got that power line and. Right, right down to. Uh, it's only in P G one, two, possibly.
I think we can do a better job on the business standpoint of how to prevent the maintenance, take the sand out of our water pipe. There's not enough space of the, 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 the jurors. But if we're essentially buying F-150s and Explorers. You can, you can sign a lot of areas that, that came to need to make repairs. But when you have such a diverse fleet, they're not safe to do it. Um, one of the candidates doesn't have time to make all the repairs and have that knowledge to work on it. But we're contracting from work out. And that's called that, well, you know, where we haven't taken time, we have to call the candidate working on something. He's had a way to take, call that calls, they do another garage, they're doing work on it. And we're paying some change for that way. Three dubs. We're paying them plus. Premium part, part third, uh, uh, candidates. So I think that would be, if we had another, uh, uh, working, that would be a prominent focus is finding the way. Addition base and we have, we get a lot of hands. Not pegging what we're doing now, but I think we can be more. More committed to that.
But with all that said and all that, and I agree with, with Tom. What kind of priority level is the sign of doing those two things? We've been talking about it a long time and it never seemed to get off the ground. And they're, well, so we get it done. So how far up the ladder of what priority levels does it have? I mean, is something we'll look into right away? Or we're going to put it off for ten years or where does it fall?
Well, we don't have time, we don't have ten years.
I, I agree with that. And, and if you go over there and chop, you ain't got one.
I agree with that too. Um, I, I think a lot of these things, we're, we're past the information that somebody's saying. I would say that that is a, obviously anything that's been done like that, like a discussion. But that's beyond an operating value. That's the cash line. So the, the benefit of that, if you want to. So the benefit, if you want to go to the fires, or you want to go to the garage, we could do that, that's more, we could get it outside. You know, when it's kind of on plan, we can, we can take action, that is useful. Cause I have nothing to do with that.
Was it bringing a plug? That was. That was. You've got any two five one, automobile? Um, that was a swap out.
Yeah, yep.
That, that didn't back with. You know, that was, um.
Well, since you brought up the truck, it's probably a good time, let's get that on the radar. Uh, yeah, I understand it's capital approval thing, it's, it's somewhere else, you have to lots of money to go to the capital approval part. But before we get it, it's got to have some kind of priority. So I would say it's just not let that land, but we have left it.
Right, so it's there. I guess that could be going on what the future level of board is and how aggressively we want to move on. But that could be an expensive item, and that's going to require finance. There's no way to make that kind of purchase within the budget. So what, I guess that, that's.
And I think that's what they're all down to is what we're doing, how much money are you going to have?
So, yeah, what, yeah, I'm going to go to that, start messing up. But I, I don't think that that's going to be in this year's budget. I mean, I think, you know, we're, we probably have to look at that for next year. But I think we do need to get an idea of, of what's our ability to, to, uh. You know, yeah, what, what is that, what can we, we're in terms of debt service. But the other thing now also requires the new audits to be complete and, and done so that we can, you know, get, go back to the funding source.
But that's going to take, keep, keep in mind that that takes quite a while to go through the process of acquiring land and. Getting an architectural rendering. So even if we said today, we want to move all this. I think we're looking at at least a full twelve months before you even potentially. Roll ground or something, cover some flooring, they want to be building. But that's something the board wants to move on for twenty five. Really now, the time to start the project.
Well, I, yeah, and, and I mean, that really matters. I think that's something we do need to start identifying property, we need to start looking at that. Because we're not going to, we, we're not going to be able to just all of a sudden do it in twenty five. I think we need to spend this year looking for alternatives and. You know, and, and we're looking for options, I guess, and, and keeping an eye out for that.
And I'm going to put it part for the building, and the, the fire company, we've asked for the last several years for physical personnel. If we had personnel or if we don't have the states and fire station board, so you need safety. If the personnel, who you came through service, unless you have hope.
It's like, we're looking at. Yeah. In the step that keep getting pushed back as we just lock on buildings. At least not at this point, but I mean, I think, I think that that's something that. You know, we, we need, we need to be making plans for, looking at what our capability for, for that services.
Well, the, the tricky thing about that is legally, what you're allowed when it comes to debt service as well, it's pleasurable, people feel that it's a problem.
Right.
Legally, we can borrow up to eight percent of their set about, well, your loan broke, we never get that one. You can actually stand use a five hundred million dollar, so that's. We can do math on that, we can definitely make that. But all of them.
No.
Um, but, you know, even when the fire, for, for all reasons, there's not very severe, you can pretty much hear the plods on the garage pretty quickly. You can look at all kinds of, of fire stations. You can build, build a two million dollar garage for a fire station, you can do the twelve million dollar. It just depends on. How hot it is in our border, and if you want to make it just essential for, for the. Uh, on that available, or you want to go and make, like, put a pretty solid on it in terms of the community center, the meeting space and all the other things, but it's. I guess you're going to want to have.
Right, but I think we need, we need to start identifying where our, we need to be looking at options, looking at where, where should we put it? Where, you know, where are we going to need it? I mean, I, you know, I'm going to make it something that's going to be out towards mega sites, so it's on that side of town, I'm like. But we need to look at.
Does the board have a preference for longer hours, or do you like both equal beats?
Oh, I don't think, pardon, 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 person to go on here.
Well, I think it's equal, it's equal need.
Man, there's good artists, they don't like them.
At this point, it's like six, nine, down on the back. What, what does the folks that figure out Cal hits people? What is, what, what kind of things do they need over there to help them do the government? You go there once and have their working, they're, they're so cranked up. They're continually getting stepped over, all kinds of stuff to get to something that they need to work on.
Well, and guys are having probably outside of this because a lot of them working inside the day.
So if we at least, I thought, now, we, we can't build a building next year, we, you know. But if we can at least start getting something down on paper, and getting ideas of what we need, so we can start formulating. Plan, have a vision of what we want, Cal hit they will, more of those guys that we can get their ideas from, and more they can buy into it. Better they will fit, more likely to go on and do something, perhaps, and sort of the same thing with the fire department. We don't have to worry about the fire department, because they can throw more ideas out there than, than you can put in chat a cap. But again, sort of the same thing, what, what would you like that?
Yeah, I think we need to, what we need to do is develop the, the list of requirements, because that's been, once we develop a list of requirements. That's going to dictate, you know, the size and emphasis, it's going to dictate, you know, what, you know, from an architectural perspective, what, you know, I won't say it will limit our options, but it'll, it'll give us a more. Uh, an idea of what it is we want to try to accomplish, once we get that list, a great list of requirements.
Right, I, I know we've all got GPS leaves and missing crap from people who's building. But it's a lot easier to build than it is, even though it's more expensive, anybody will be building, trying to register for a partner. Like this, so it's, it's incredible. This is, this is. But a lot of what happens, you know, you're looking at three hundred, three hundred fifty square foot. When you're constructing that, it's not, it's not going to be a cheap process.
No, not expecting it will be, but I think, but what's going to dictate what the square footage is, the requirements that we determine that happen. You know, these are our, these are our must haves, these are our nice to haves.
Yeah, but the hard part of the public building vision process, it's, it's hard to imagine that that building is going to be the last fifty years. Long past any of us reading here. Um, but so many times, I think, not thinking hard about, they're in five years, and they've already got to run the building because we didn't think. Boom, nothing will.
Well, that's, that's exactly why, you know, when, when you look at, when you look at waste water treatment, so will do they, you know, had we had the vision years ago. You know, we should, we should acquire more property, should have had, had that to build out to be able to be a twelve, fifteen million gallon a day. Like, we just don't have that here.
Let's, let's, let's always must remain, the extent that it is today will always be more than tomorrow. The price, we need to answer their demands, so. We look, we look back twelve years, and so we got the board that we wish to have, I think, it's. You know, there's just, it's worth it, or to a year, and then it's like. And nothing, and, and I have another part of it too, if we know that it's still a lot of buildings in solid city, and if we're out chatting down. So sooner we act from a living standpoint, the better off it's going to be. You know, because F one five, and everything jumps again with the setting, you're going to pay even more.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, is I think we need to have, we need to put all those requirements together and determine what the site, what, what the size of a, a site needs to be. So that we can be thinking about, okay, well, if we think we need ten, ten acres today, we probably ought to acquire twenty acres, twenty five acres. Yeah, I'm just throwing the numbers out there, but you see what I'm going at.
Right, well, and that's where it made it beneficial, when we have the comprehensive land management work on. A part of that process is helping identify strategic locations of the public facility. Um, same thing with the parks and area management, you may not particularly care campus, you know, twenty acres of that big town facility, one of the degrees, basic quote. Some type of policy, you know, it's fair, it's in the hand, come on. Um, that's where I, I think we've made a lot of the steps to work on them, we'll get them found on. So I know that's a big challenge on the fleet, I think it could be some really long-term benefits for us, uh, but I'm going to make sure that we're all on the same page, a little bit, and do it when we move on. And what happened to. I'll be quiet. Uh-oh. My clicker, my dad, it's filled it up. Thank you. So this is what's requested for next year, and. Uh, I don't know how, how first everybody will be, we're talking explorers and F one fifties, fourth floor of the issue, that's what's on the far left. Fourth F one fifties, what you see on the right, so that's kind of what we're looking at as far as, uh, the standardization of vehicles. And, and these have really gone down in price, especially on state contracts, and historically, everybody bought chargers, there was proud dates that you see. Um, it's kind of the point where the issue dues are resale a lot higher value, and they're not that different in price now. So that's why, that's why we're going in that direction, and, and most agencies are. Uh, Public Works has requested purchasing a, a four F five fifty for the twelve foot dump bed and snowplow. And Cal shared that if we were able to make that purchase, it would also allow us to get rid of two of the trucks that we have, that would be a little versatile with that purchase. So that is the, the standardization process, and I only even had a question, we really went kind of two fifty in the budget. And we were this, today, and figure out that two fifty around, so we could buy a one fifty and accomplish the same goal, uh, save a little bit of money.
Everybody's done last, from the last time, last time. Who let Cal speak on that? He's expert in so far.
Well, I can speak about, um, talk to you about paper, and I can impart on. Last thing, we had three snow in January, back to back to back. Um, the reason, me and my team chose the five fifty because it was a little small, first of all, we're not quite big.
What?
There's, the roads are smaller.
Small.
Yes, are smaller, um, and then, this truck is not, it's no operation, you have time to remove. It can still be used to haul other equipment, such as an excavator, um, a jetting, but it's a dual purpose. Their pile comes off, and it's put on about ten, fifteen minutes if that long, and you're capable of still climbing roads. The biggest thing that comes to the five fifty is what we have now, it's about a thirteen foot weight. And when you, you know, this small tree is hard to turn that truck around. So this will give us more mobility for the small access roads around here, and maybe, you know, have more of a different amount. We have another option, it's in these little side streets where the big trucks make it.
The five feet here for a little bit.
No, just. Really, not, not. But the same spread we're going to that, that'll give you probably about another four thousand pounds, maybe six thousand. That weight, on the back of that rear axle, that five fifty, you have to push your power to maneuver and go through this whole panel, back in the car.
Where do you put that sprayer body?
It would sit directly in the back of that dump.
The same sprayer body we, this about needed, the sprayer body is about needed, isn't it?
The one we currently have now, it is, um, but it's a six ton, no, it's a ten ton or ten yard unit, sitting in the back of a truck. It's a big unit.
Yeah.
This would be a smaller, add-on, B-shaped, present sitting in back of the unit. Small.
So we, oh, so. We have another sprayer unit.
No, we have one.
I never got one.
We have one, but if we was able to buy another one, this one would be primarily for the secondary, the small road, and the big road not move on. The whole back of my other guy, it didn't work. Paul, I, Paul, I know he does one, he does, but. That's a special piece of equipment, I can't say the majority of staff knows how to offer that piece of equipment, but I do, you know, I don't show. Um, before, I would get their training, you know, they, we have all these who come in here and. Keep the younger generation on top, to be the motivator, but I understand that now, that's going to be a, a key in the cell.
And I think tying in that, if we're making a decision to approve certification type program, the providers and the vendors have the first skill and all training. We'll go along and make sure that we have a gun, just you while the better this is the program. One of our challenges, we've had so much burdened, because we cannot have those opportunities, the guy who wants to learn the law, and to learn how to do all this at the pass. So it's very limited, and who can drive and operate, and like, sometimes a little bit of a version, it's split. This is a perfect piece of equipment, so, we also have some playgrounds, they're miserable, they're thrown, they hurt themselves, and take something up to. Um.
Will the five fifty require C D L, based on weight?
Uh, yes, it will, um. If it's not pulling anything, no, and maybe you put something behind it, then yes. So the average employee with the fast feet, lightest, will be able to operate.
Do we have a bronze thing, too, because of the back of the truck?
I think we have two of them, two bronze things.
But you win that truck?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And you look good.
Okay, let's make a call, personnel pay and benefits. Those are not our hands, by the way. So tying back to the strategic planning, and I have a copy of it in front of you. Strategic priority goal number three. Um, address providing competitive salaries and benefits. Uh, if you remember, we had a meeting with Terry Jackson, where he covered the employee climate survey, and all of them, who participated in. That was the number one binding of our employees, uh, filling out the survey anonymously, you follow twenty two. Uh, completed the survey and said, number one weakness or suggestion for improvement was addressing compensation. The last time, going back, looking historically, that the town of Solid City, the cost of living adjustment was two thousand and ten. And due to that, we've had compression across all of our departments. So, well, let's address that upfront. Uh, we have done lots of pay studies, we've implemented pay studies, but all pay study is doing is catching this up when it comes to pay grades. You're definitely minimum salary in place position, the first is the position. If you do not continue to do adjustments with employees, the individual throughout time, you have compression, meaning you're bringing in a brand new employee. At the same salary that they experienced her at the same job. And we've had, every time we do a pay study, it's increasing that compression that we're not seeing on top of every paying salary adjustment throughout the new fiscal year. So when I say cost of living adjustment, that, that can have many different meanings. What we're meaning with this is, it's been since two thousand and ten, since the town is done, the adjustment to pay across the board for all employees. For all of their evaluation, just a flat percentage raise.
But it has already been valuations and raises, as that. All share helped with the compression, the lack of coal over the past thirteen years.
I think it's mitigated the damage, but it's not solved, and it's got worse. And, and the reason I say that is in the environment that we're in, Solid City, our surrounding agencies have done cross-the-board raises. And larger, and larger percentages than what Solid City has done as America is. So if we, if we're doing, for example, three percent merit, time evaluation, and our peer agencies are big and sad, and was across the board. Our employees, even our top performers, lost four percent when it comes to ground to our peers, invested in those. And when you've had that happen year after year since two thousand and ten, the best dollars they've been able to do is somebody grades up and adjust them. But we've done, we've done well when it comes to how you employees bring them in competitively. But veteran employees are all, are not really, you shouldn't see veteran employees climbing, getting closer to the midpoint, or even if it's maximum of the pay grade. And we don't have employees who are close to that. I think we only have one employee, the one that's actually above this, of their own age right now. Um, we have, uh, less than ten, in full-time employees that have ten years of experience with talent. And we're anticipating at least three retirement in the next year. That number is going to be even smaller, uh, that's not probably going to get any better, just with the, the nature of the workforce today, unemployed. Unemployed typically work an entire career in one location. The, the challenge of that is it's a little, it's more mercenary. And if someone's going to offer you $500 or $1,000 to go somewhere else in a lower level of position, they're going to take it. The, the loyalty isn't there, but on this in, in the town, like many of your veteran employees have that, and should be changing the culture. So if you can't, or if you can't stay competitive, then we're going to be in a position where we can stay behind all the time.
But the, the, the flip of that is that if there's no, um, loyalty, if it is mercenary. Then we're just going to give these rates and people going more.
That's assuming you can go to the union when that person leaves.
And we're not. No, but what I'm saying is that you're talking about call on to prevent the mercenary attitude and keep people here. But if it is that cutthroat, then the flip side of it as well, then no matter what we're given, they're gonna, they're always going to be looking for the next best. Always going to have this attitude that the grass screener, does that, because that argument cuts both ways. It does, so how do you even, um. So I guess, what is the other? Assuming it is, you know, I don't doubt you can assist some people even, not just say suppose, but what's the other piece of the pie that you decide is money? It's going to develop loyalty and keep them here?
Well, I, I think the difference is, I think we've found that discussion for several years. They now, you got participation in the survey, a very high participation rate where they told you that pay is the reason why they're leaving. But I, I think it's.
Well, so I, I agree to an extent in the fact that. Pay is a reason. And oftentimes employees will say it is the reason, yet, because they're often, they are often not willing to give us the hard truths and why they're leaving. Now, that said, um, you know, I, I think that the, we call it the mercenary nature. This is not, this is not a, a public service issue. This is an issue across Indian, in the southern industries, about, it's a sizable issue. Now, we're never going to be in a position where we can just continue with our pay to, to. We've all offset that and we, I think, because of the small town nature and we are in a center of. I mean, we're, we're in the center of the state, you can be pretty much anywhere, you know, that's in a decent sized town within 20, 25, 30 minutes. So we're always, until, until we are of this size, we can keep that, we're always going to be followed. Now, we have to, we have, which means I think we have to be creative in the way that we approach it. Because we just can't, we just can't keep our money, well, that means the cap.
Then the challenge that we have in the solid city is that in small towns, that are, um, completely, the other parts of state would be these size. Where there's mountains, where there are coast, where you, not nearly the population that we have. I think the most harmful thing in the last few years for us is that Chatham County has the highest unit home, across any state, 582,000. It's, it's awkward for it to be proving between people. Really, point quarter on the, sell that at my home. Someone's going to offer them significant pay increases, and that's kind of working situation, and everyone is.
Well, you're, you're right, but, but here's the thing, so you're right. But you look at all the cost of living in those other areas is significantly more. Because if you don't, you know, when you look at the median home price, yeah, you're right. When you look at Chatham County as a whole, absolutely correct. Whereas that, that's, it's concentrated in the east and northeast. The west and the southwest of this, of this county don't come close to that. And, you know, we're, and right now, as a moratorium, we can't increase the number of, of housing units. Um, which will eventually, we'll get there, but. It's going to be, I mean, I, I struggle to understand how someone could make a move to Apex. Pay that kind of cost for housing for a $500 a year increase. That's not why they're leaving. They're, they're not leaving for a $500 to go to Apex. They're going, they're going to Apex, yes, for 500, but they're also going there for career path. They're going there for, you know, additional growth opportunities, which we just don't have. So, you know.
Well, people differ totally.
Well, that, that is, it was the young, uh, more than your abs.
A lot of it comes down to opportunity. I mean, we pay, we pay higher salaries with other places down there that were in lower income markets and had less problems. We had whole problems with prevention, but there are more opportunities, there are better employment in our surrounding area. But employers are continuing to pursue. I, I think when it comes to that loyalty component, the challenge with that is we, we have less than a handful of full-time employees that work in town that actually live in solid city. In the world of limits. So when you don't have that sense of community where you're active, part of the community that you live in, it makes it hard to easily consider public ownership of this thing. But if you keep, you know, a, a pretty basic metric of finances, about 100,000 or 150, you're anything of a house. It's part of finding houses in solid city that does itself at least $400,000 a pound, even, even considering the lower cost on western accounting. Yeah, nobody makes, nobody in solid city is making any income to me that I work.
No, but, well, yeah, but when you, well, again, we, we're looking at comps and we're looking at, at other things. I mean, I know that there's, there are listings that, there's going to be one in my neighborhood, it's going to be listed for, you know, a whole lot less than that, but. You know, I mean, I, I think it, it, it depends on where you look.
And, but now, Chris, I remember, because this goes back some time. We, when we went away, we used to do this cobra thing all the time. And when we went away from, uh, and to the more American, they, uh, who were 2.6? And then it was. And at the time, the cost of living, you know, 2% either yearly or just not, we're waiting above that, but that's not the reason. And in the scheme of things, like, like Commissioner Thaler said, we have, had a rain in 2.4. Two was.
Essentially, essentially a receipt of coal.
Yeah, what did we call it?
It's a, it's a, yeah.
Yeah, well, there's needs exceeds and. Yeah. And, and it was to incentivize, you know, somebody who would over there above. But the fallacy of that, that's, that was the really concept, or they just happened to want everything. And all of a sudden, everybody was in the top bracket, and everyone coming in just about, oh, they accept, they let's it. But at the same time, the, the injuries that were getting were over and above what, you know, the cost of living, well, it's at the current, at the current level. So some of what you said about the cobra thing, yeah, but not all of it is that way. And here in the last couple of years, the cobra thing, the gun down quack, and inflation, 10% or whatever it is, nine, whatever. Everything else has gone up, all of a sudden, our cost of living, what is it, 6%? So according to this, so, you know, yeah. So, you know, so that's a, that's sort of a recent thing. And, uh, and I'm, I'm not a big fan of cobra, but I've had to deal with it for years, years and years and years and years. And you get used to it and you just, there's no reward for your extension on, um, people that are doing it. It's, well, not everybody gets that, but.
I think you could want me in the vote too, because I'm a lot of fan of cobra, instead of 10 years of being a lord. A large fan, and you have to do it to catch up. But as a fundamental position, I believe in the board, what can please, put in an extra time. I know we gotta get called out, but would like to get back to it. If that, if that's what the moment is, um, if we do get back to it now, I think we have a saying that our tool was a bit subjective. Because we had a lady who was director of finance who got exceptional all the time, and we're doing this. We gotta come up with something that will put them up, Jack, come on. It's very, we're on for this, then we need them, we have to.
The department has an automatic exception about trying to improve that process. That will apply to management.
And, and, and so this, the, the cobra that's coming out of the, um, the general fund.
The cobra that's on the slide here, that addresses all funds.
But ultimately, I mean, you know, we, because we don't know what, we don't know what the, uh, course, we don't know what the, the expenses and revenue projections are for the other funds yet. But if I just did the math, and what, what you're, what you're asking here leaves us, out of the general fund, the, the, based on your projections, $131,801 to do something with. So if we, we focus all of the, all of the money on a CPI raise, we're not going to have very much to do the other things like, like the, the F-500, the other, other things. So what are, what are we, that I'm, I'm sure you'll get there.
We're getting the 131.
So, and it's, so I did the math based on the items on slide number eight, which is an increase in revenue percent, revenue expectation of $463,101. Subtract 331,300 from that figure, I think, or 41,801.
So, I mean, so, I still have to.
So if you add, so on slide eight, if you add the 422,988 plus the 78,953, subtract 38,840.
Okay.
That comes up to a net figure of 463,101.
Okay, increase in whether.
Increasing, uh, increase in the revenue projection. And if you take the, the 7% CPI out of that, that leaves us 131,801.
Right, actually. And I, and, and to follow up on that too, another way of looking at it, when I did the different in the general fund, we're up 200,000. Um, but in this time, they will say, we don't know at this point what are other expenses we're going to need. So we had a question, how we come up with that 331,300 dollars? Spread across funds?
Yeah, I mean, you're spreading across.
We're just looking at the 10, but I don't think there's a whole lot left.
Right, but I mean, again, I mean, the, the 20, the 30, and the 40, we just don't, we don't know what, we don't know what the numbers are looking like in terms of revenue projections for the other three funds.
The ones that were, are the percentage.
Correct, we don't, yeah, we don't, we don't know what those are yet. However, that's where I'm just taking, if I just do a flat figure, then, you know, based on the revenue projections, with the 10 fund and take out the salaries, that's 131 that's left over. I mean, you can do the math a couple of different ways, but I mean, putting those ones, it's just not a lot. So what, so we just need, what we need to, we need to understand priorities here. I wouldn't mean to set aside a board of our priorities, are we going to go south? We're going to look at, we're going to do a combination of the two. We can't address it all, not in the pleasure.
Are you playing with some kind of, how do you call it?
Well, it's going to be hard to achieve, um, this is probably three. It's, I think you go saying, I agree, it's going to be hard to achieve parties one, two, and three. Based on what we've seen just from the general fund. Now, maybe a clearer picture will come into play when we look at the other funds and compare those to the expenses. Because this is a very, very small part of the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Um, then one part is not the total, the total picture. So if we, it seems like this is our third problem, based on the slides. And maybe there's a different opinion, but based on the slide, it seems like even though this is our third authority, we're throwing the most money at it.
Yeah, and I don't know that about this critique, I don't know if you let me know. The strategic priorities aren't in order of, in, in not, not in order of priority, they were just, the, these are, these were listed as a, and just in no particular order. Uh, we're saying, yeah, no, I, yeah.
Three.
They're always there. They used to be, that was, I'm saying, those, uh, not the exact, and get those, uh.
What happened?
What happened? Do they give any?
Well, it's eight years past, they got, years past, and they came in just in their jobs, meets the 2%. You got to, we did eight years ago. That came to a real cave, that plan, but it was. Two was cobra back then. And then that's four and six, but somewhere along the way, I think it was for the cobra, maybe eight, 9%. The two, the standard two percent, oh, it's on the stuff. That's going to replace it with the merit, but part of merit, but that two percent.
No, we're.
I don't think we had anybody who's ever, uh, to, I don't think we had anybody that was here.
We, we had.
Yeah, well, they don't hear about it yet.
Well, that's, I'm just saying, everyone.
Not meet, that meets expectations, yeah. Yeah, that's a good thing.
I mean, what were the percentage of people who didn't get at least?
I can't remember that, she had to list it.
Whether the ten was the one in the range.
Maybe it's a low number, um, it might have been, um, it was always less than five.
Did they get a?
But at least one or two.
They didn't get a visit though.
No.
Yeah, well, if they're, if they're, if they're not meeting, if they're not meeting expectations, then they should get a raise.
Well, they want to be tried in some.
I'm not just not disagreeing with you, but I'm just saying.
And I think that we got into a question about, I need to go to, get past somebody, be a link on the call, before it proves. But some regions know that they want we to get a pay pay. And therefore, they're there to, to counsel them and represent their, yeah.
Anyone that may below some expectations was drawn here.
So I, I guess, if the challenge is possible, then that would have been sort of. I, I guess if you got this, some expectation of how important this is, I'm not, I'm not really well clear deciding what's been done in the past. But I do think we have James sort of stated, surrounding your restrictions of who. You know, I think in the merit basis, when it rolled out, I think it was progressive at the time, because it was more than what we had just been doing. I'd be there to pursue that, it was happening in the American, that's why. Well, but that's, we're in a position now, when we're in a period where it's 6%, across the board for everybody, for all of us. And I would want 2% merit somehow.
Another thing, they're managing to follow all their home rooms, all their sleep replacements, and their sound.
All of this growth, all of this increase in revenue, about a little pack, all of this, a lot of bump outs, and it's a combination of that. I don't think there's one answer to that, but we're in a position.
Well, we, we told them all, called them, and bumped out, so we told them all, pass. So it's true that, that, sure, the pieces in the bottom.
You said two things, call me, call, raise taxes, or go ahead and, uh.
But I'm just, you know, maybe.
That's not a long term, that's not.
Derek, well, I think the number one area for, but the, the hanging on the growth. Every other, you know, our, 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 other, we look at Pittsburgh and their growth, look at Apex, their growth, look at Cary, their growth, look at Flanders, look at Greensboro, look at Ashboro. I mean, they're, they're, they are growing and, and we are not yet. However, we will, which will bring in additional revenue.
Well, and so that, we have to bridge that.
Is that.
Well, they have to, to, but by long, the census showed we had rotten lips, that's what it is. So we have not, we're, 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 we have not rotten lips, they're not going to have to see us. They are afraid to let the census, but we don't get the money because they don't feel us, that's true. And we all know that's true, but we want to, so.
That's absolutely true.
And then we're not getting the money.
And so that, and then we're stuck. Again, we're exposed, and it's going to be very, very much, that way. And so then we're left, and then we're saying, well, now we've got a, a fact of bigger gap to cover. Uh, because we got to complete with these places that are growing, when the funding that would give you flex and decrease, we'll know that's not true.
Absolutely, and I think everybody else, or I heard in, in the yes, it's just like, you know, that's growth, it's same for increasing sales, you start off with, you increase sales, you gotta come on and do it. But the other thing too is that all these other, other tables that are doing this with their. Pay, they, they don't have as many pieces of pie as they have fun, they have airports, they don't have all this new giant gift truck we had to look at. They don't have all that, but if they do, it's a dumb, a whole bunch of small things. So they, they can actually take a larger chunk of their available revenue to have to go to this, or I would just split up over such a diverse amount of things we have.
Or tax base is fair compared to their goal device.
Yeah, the tax base is significantly more residential, which can be higher income, where I saw diversity of market presentation.
You said, I keep remembering I said, it was some. Yeah, yeah.
And we're getting around C P R thousand for everything, that's because they have a lot of those come to the end of their. But the thing is, uh, it's not with years, not years, but I guess about a year, I think, is this road that we talk about. It's coming, but it's not even yet, but these expenses are here now. And I don't know how to bridge that gap until we get to the growth in the higher level tax and the more, uh, revenue from industry. Uh, and even then, you got a factor in the industry is typically a incentive plan, and that, that income is for about ten years.
Well, I didn't bridge that. Well, I think, I think the, the more, I, I, and I'll just say, I think the more it's really put down for all of it, and, and had, if we had not had that, and we were in the, you know, had the ability. It would, yes.
You can't expand our actual impact, but, and again, at some point in time, I guess not today, but some point in time, we gotta talk about the responses. Uh, because I think that's going to require volunteering and.
The E Q is one of the ones that can determine that.
I know, but I think it seems not.
It's possible, they, they could, they, they can very well say, no, there's no, nothing substantive that would require a volunteering, there's. But, yeah, that, that's a whole other topic.
It is, but I bring it up because as you, where you're pointing out, it, it really bothered us, against us, we all, all revenues that we need, definitely need to follow, not just salaries, but capital improvements, labor improvements, a whole lot of the.
Well, if General Biden's coming during this week to speak, there's real speed thing. And maybe somebody, somebody over there put a bug in somebody's ear, right, said, look, we bought a whiskey. You know, we're playing a big bar here. Move this, uh, we need to add the idea somehow, uh, so we can move forward, you know, the hand we got.
I don't think from, you know, hopefully they'll give them a, they're like, should they someone? What's the meaning, what you buy?
In government.
If this is on the schedule, I can't give them one.
And I'm sure it's, it's gonna be, the security on this, it's high, they've already got their list. It'll be high of people, and I'm not saying it's certain, it's single term, it would be, it would be, you think, I don't know, it's, it might not be.
Are you on the Secret Service list?
So, yeah, I think, I think, so what was, what's, what's next? I mean, I, I know we're talking about seven percent, what's?
Well, seven, seven percent is not a recommendation, it's just that, that then find that what CPI will. Yes, uh, I mean, that would be ideal, but obviously you can't, we want to develop, and we got to find a balance. I, I can't tell you most of our peers or members, or anyone in my group, they're hearing a possibility increase, and they're doing it, and all of that. Uh, they're not so, so bored with that. Uh, I'd say a lot of places, you run a pile across the board, and then one, two percent of all of that.
We could, we could, we could, where, and wherever they give, give them the reminder for like a seven.
They're just going to take about seven, so I'll just give a couple of seven. There, there are also points like this, as we're applying catch-up all the time, we do the possibility every year, and we're going to move your decisions because five percent is going to be great, so we're playing a lot of catch-up, where if they're not finding a way of possibility, when the base starts, that's where they're paying this money. Call them, sliding the grade out the other one, but the other one, here's a, well, so they, this is all, we're just, but I also like to see, and, and, um, I don't know what our, what our policy is, or how, how, how we manage it, but just because we lose someone who's a grade thirty, doesn't mean we need to fill it at the grade thirty, that was just a person who was in it, we should be, maybe fill it at the grade twenty-five, I don't, I don't know all of this specific grade, but you know what I'm saying, right?
But the conditions are assigned to graders, not people, so like our street maintenance worker is always going to be that, right?
Right. Right, but you know, as, as, as he or she progresses in, in their career, you know, there, there are street maintenance worker one, and here there's street maintenance worker two, and street maintenance worker three, which just because of the street maintenance worker three leads to the meaning, we need to replace the street maintenance worker three, we could replace the street maintenance worker one. And, and, and build that. Yeah, I'm just saying, as, as we look at three as backfilling, that backfilling position, backfilling at a lower role, at a lower grade, to, you know, allow for, you know, more growth in, in their career, rather than adding to, just so we lost somebody, the street maintenance worker three, hey, we gotta have that.
If we, if we do, it does give upper mobility, but we're gonna have to invest in training, you know, to, to, but still, that, that might be better of all than.
Yeah, I, I, and I don't know to what, to, to degree, I don't know to what degree we do that today, but I think that's something we don't, we need to insert a little agenda.
So as department heads, if you, um, from a morale standpoint, but certainly we got three levels or a particular, whatever position, and your top guy, your gal quits. Moralize, if we bring in the one instead of three, and we train them, we bump them up, and then get, you know, it's kind of fire for them. And for the, for the department, is that better? Or is it better to have that three coming in, just in status, and you know, doesn't click?
Ideally, I would think that any employee in the toilet town wants to step up. But when that top person does leave, the one below him, who's been put forth effort to be able to go and step to the space. Therefore, they give the bottom space, for the person to come back in the bottom space because the person was promoted to the highest spot.
Yeah, well, so, one thing to start by.
Thirty-one nine four.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one nine eight.
Let's take a quick, uh, image reset. Co-photos.
If we could promote on the hand. No, we don't, we got, we just don't have a good.
That foreign.
No, they, so, there, I thought that, and it, I mean, you're not going to stay criminal, police order, and I'm going to go, let go of police officers. Because that's a deeper target, there is a larger, the experience. Unless you had somebody who was ready, something moved up, right? If you can, but you have to, you're, you're prepared for many of the problems, they gotta have an officer to go with them. Not talking about, you know, how I'm going to, they didn't even do the frame, and they were, but that's, they didn't. And they can't, and. And that's what I'm saying, uh.
That's what your son said.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're still in, they were in towns.
Yeah, they were in, they were.
Oh, yes, they worked, yeah. Oh, yes, they work there. My mother in law, the grandad is. Well, not really. Get the ten, gonna say. Yes, I'm saying we. She is, she's in there and she only there is thirty and it's done by about nine thirty. Yeah, to. Would and if I work a minute, I swear, I mean, the way you sit. I would have worked hard, shaken up the table. I can't. Before. Very not. Absolutely not. Well. But that's, you know, anyway, everything I'm buying, you know, not my fault, that is. You know. I'm just. Okay. We need to be though, we're trying to.
I'm trying to. Oh. Yeah. I was gonna say. Trying to first. How do you even talk to your parents?
I get it. Yeah. I I I get. Of course, you can have surplus states. Hundred ninety. Yep. Eight hundred. Wow. Yeah. Yeah. Well, I got the double in. Revise. For fifty nine nine pounds. So two thousand nine hundred pounds. That is. Right, that the only thing I was not. Blaming on thirty one ninety nine, it was no, it was twenty nine ninety nine pound. Well, when it. Who had a big uh, was eighty nine nine, so I just could just buy that. But but you know, but they got the um, the shrimp fresh, you know, eight nine nine. They were really good price. Really, really good price. Yeah.